The Board of County Commissioners is back in session. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Lovestrang, Extension Office Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Sorry, I missed my deadline for getting my report in this, for this period as well, for the board meeting. Most of the period has been taken up with travel out of town for regional and statewide extension meetings and in-service trainings. I did not have any items for action for the board today. I can update you briefly on the facility project. We are planning to start construction at the building in July. And the contractor, we still don't have the official contract worked out for the board to sign, but they say that they can finish that work, renovation in the building, in thirty-five days. So, we're looking at the potential to be in there, probably in early to late fall this year, which will be very nice. Get the move all taken care of and get set up in there.
Can anybody else have anything from Eric Lovestrang?
Mr. Chairman, let me just add one thing if I can. So, I went to a conference last night that IFS put on, Eric saw it put on. It was, it was to inform the community about the risk and dangers that we have in Franklin County about the citrus greening. And citrus greening is here in the county, and I'm, I own citrus trees, so I was very concerned, and I say this on behalf of all the public, that right now, the outbreak is, I would say, widespread in Franklin County. And those of us who have citrus trees and believe as a Floridian, you always should have a citrus tree in your yard, there is now a risk that you're just throwing your money away. Because until the citrus, until the fly that is a vector carries around is under control, you buy a new citrus tree, it could easily get reinfected. So, until that thing is under control, buying more citrus trees or replacing trees that have died in your yard is not, you're just going to continue to have the problem. So, it's a major problem, and I just want to make sure that people hear about it through the various medias, that the citrus greening is in Franklin County, and it's a problem affecting residential homes. And if you have a diseased tree, you ought to pull it out, but don't necessarily replace it with another tree right away, because we need to get this disease through the county before we start all over again.
And one of the primary things that happened last night was, we had several representatives there that are members of the Cold Hardy Citrus Group, several of the board members from that organization, and these are people who are actually growing acreage of cold hardy citrus in North Florida here. We've got groves in Jackson County, we've got groves over by Monticello, there are groves now towards Perry. As you go on ninety-eight and come into Perry, you'll see some Satsuma groves on the left there. And those folks are concerned about this issue getting into the commercial side of the effort to really expand citrus in North Florida that can handle the colder temperatures up here.
Yeah, there's about a thousand acres, believe it or not, there's about a thousand acres of citrus groves in North Florida now, North Florida being the Panhandle, as opposed to two-hundred thousand acres in South Florida. So, we're a small, small parcel, but we could expand. And one of the, one of the, one of the after facts, after effects of Hurricane Michael was that they showed a dramatic photo, and I'm sorry we don't have it here, that basically the Appalachian Chappala River Corridor was full of pine trees before Hurricane Michael. With Hurricane Michael blowing all the trees down, you now have this corridor of wind carrying bugs and vectors up into Southern Georgia and potentially infecting the citrus groves that they had just planted. And they are on their, they're just panicked. I won't say panicked is not the right word, but they're very, very concerned, the citrus growers, that they have this natural boundary of pine trees blocking the flow of insects. And now those things have been blown down, and with the right wind, you're, all these problems we have on the coast are going to be carried inland. So, it's, it's a major problem.
You can look at the before and after photos of that area, satellite images, and once those downed trees started to brown up, you can just see it. It's a huge swath of brown going up there that used to be all green.
They ain't trying to get, make nothing to stop the kill of this thing?
They don't have, they're doing all kind of research, and there's no, there's no cure right now.
They're continuing to work on trying to develop rootstocks and tree varieties that are resistant, that could stand the disease better, but no cure once the bacterium is in the tree. They don't have any way to kill it.
Okay.
So, the best factor will be try to mitigate populations of these cillids right now. And if we have a spell where the cillids don't have trees to produce and expand their populations on, that's going to give us a head start on trying to get ahead of this thing a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have reviewed the extension, different subject matter, going back to the, you know, construction of the building. I've already reviewed the construction contracts and provided my comments. They are working presently through some, I think, refinements on the scope of the work, but I've made a note, I will follow up with Doug Schuler, the architect, and the contractor, to find out where we are on finalizing that contract.
Okay. All right, anybody else got anything from Mr. Lovestrang? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Lisa Lance, Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a couple notes of appreciation. We had appreciation to all the participants and volunteers that assisted with the mobile lab, or mobile mammogram event that was held in Carabel on May fourth. Wanted to extend thanks to the Florida Department of Health, the Text Care X-Ray, Franklin Needs, and Dr. Karen Bartley of the Waculla Medical Center. This event is sponsored by these great organizations, and also the Carabel Chamber of Commerce and the Franklin Public Library. We did have seventeen women that came that was able to get their mammogram done that day. Also, an additional note of appreciation that's not on my report, we'd like to welcome and thank the Coastline RV Park as they have joined the Franklin County Public Library as a Little Free Library Steward. If you're not familiar with Little Free Libraries, they're a free lending library. The Little Free Library is open to anyone for use. You take a book, you read a book, you put a book back in, you can share that book or return the book. It's an exchange program. So, they've located one on their property. All the Little Free Libraries have charter numbers, and they are registered on the national Little Free Library site, so anybody can go on their map and see where a Little Free Library is located. We also have two others in the county. We've got one at the Land Art Community Center and one on the Doc Myers property on Saint George Island. So, those are great for our community. We also have a garden program today at the East Point Branch at one-thirty. The topic is about lawn care, and we're in that time of year, we've got to keep our lawn green for our neighbors to have envy about how we're doing that. Again, today at one-thirty at the East Point Branch. In extension of that, I want to congratulate the Master Gardener students. We had nine students that has completed their tests successfully. They're working on seventy-five volunteer hours required to graduate in December. In addition to the library gardens, they are working on the Orman Houses Gardens and the Research Reserve's native plant display. Additionally, all are accumulating their required six CEUs, which are programs with specific topics. For example, there was one of the programs was last night at the Combs Armory on citrus greening, so that's one of the areas that they get the required CEUs. I want to thank Les Harrison, he's the, with the Waculla Extension Office, the director, he has facilitated this program for us this year. They had to restart the program in January, because originally they had started last September before the storm. Also, want to thank Eric Lovestrang, who also taught some of the classes through this program. But if you're by either library, we have our demo gardens, and the Master Gardeners are actually maintaining those as well. Our music second language recital will be held at East Point Branch on June fourteenth at five o'clock. There'll be nineteen students that will be performing that has, will be finishing this program, and that event is open to the public. We also have the summer reading program. It's that time of year. A Universal Stories is scheduled to begin on June sixth, will go through July twenty-fifth. All programs will be on Thursdays with staff programs about space exploration, and our summer performers include the Tampa Tyco Drummers on June thirteenth, the Florida Archaeology Network on June eleventh. We have the Tallahassee MoLab on July eighteenth with a program on sound science. And on July twenty-fifth, to close us out, will be Animal Tales, where all the animals are related to the constellations. East Point programs will be on Thursdays at two o'clock and the Carabel Library at four, and those do again start on June sixth. I do need to mention something on the report. I was given the resignation of Sherri Wesson, who is a part-time library assistant at the Carabel Branch. That is effective May thirty-first. And I want to thank Sherri for her time with the library. She's been a valid asset to the library and the community. Also, due to this request, I am adjusting, I will be adjusting in June the hours at the Carabel Branch. Currently, they operate Monday through Friday, nine to six, and Saturday, ten to two. We will be converting back to nine to five, Monday through Friday, and on Saturday, ten to two. We did this when we were short-staffed previously as well. We will only lose five hours a week, and that way we'll still be available on Saturdays, because it's hard for a full-time and one part-time to maintain that. We also do, I'm also doing this as well, too, because effective June seventh is my resignation.
I have a question for you, Ms. Lisa.
Yes, sir.
The lady that's, the end of the month, I'd like to see Mr. Mike, the one that's been volunteering for about four years down there, be able to get a chance to get the job, or part-time.
We can discuss that.
Okay. And what's your idea of putting somebody in charge when you leave? How are you going to work?
The staff is going to have their responsibilities to continue in both locations, and the staff knows who they will contact in, in East Point. We're working on that right now. I'm finishing the logistics of that.
Commissioners, you kind of, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, but we kind of jumped the gun, because Ms. Aguirre was going to explain. Ms. Lance, since we've already said it, Ms. Lance has turned in her resignation as your director for the libraries. She's, she's moving on, she's got another position in another state. And Ms. Aguirre was going to stand up behind Ms. Lance.
Well, she can go ahead, yeah.
And state that now, and I guess we might as well move right on there into that. I'm sorry, Lisa, was there anything else that you wanted to talk about?
No.
Okay.
Kate Aguirre, Library Advisory Board Chairman. As Lisa said, as Michael has said, we're very sad that Lisa has chosen to accept a position in Tennessee. She's moving back up to be closer to family. So, I think we all understand that, but it makes us sad to see her go, and not quite sure how we're going to move forward. But Michael and I and members of the Friends of the Library have a meeting tomorrow. Lisa and I are working over the next three weeks to establish a transition plan, so that in the absence of, once she leaves, before a new director is in place, all of the staff, as she said, will have their areas of responsibility and have a hierarchy that they understand and that we all know, you know, what's going to happen. There's not a single staff member, as we've had in the past, that could step in and act as an acting director. So, we're working on how to kind of spread the responsibilities across the existing staff with as little disruption as possible. That being said, I'm here to ask for, I guess, permission to post for the library director position. In the past, the advisory board reviews the applications and interviews all the applicants and makes a, brings a recommendation to the county commission of who should be the next library director. And that has to start with a posting in the paper, and that's what I'm here to ask for.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Lisa for the services that she's provided to Franklin County. We appreciate your service and hate to see you go, but life moves on. And I'd also like to make a motion to begin advertising for a new library director as soon as possible, because I don't think we'll get this done before she's gone. But if we don't get it started, then, you know, it's going to take that much longer. So, I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead and start advertising, and follow the same route that we always have, send the applicants, let the library advisory committee interview them, select the applicant, bring it back to the county commission with a recommendation. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, for about two seconds. Commissioner Massey and Commissioner Burke.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something, please.
Discussion.
Ms. Lisa, I'd also like to thank you for everything you've done for our library in East Point and Carabel. You were very busy. I even told you at times, I think you're pushing a little too hard, because there were so many programs. There was definitely something for everybody that was interested and wanted to be a part of the library system. You helped facilitate that, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your.
And Ms. Lisa, I remember very clearly, post Hurricane Michael, how you opened the parking lot in the library there in Carabel to all the federal and state agencies and made access truly what the word is, and we appreciate you very much.
Ms. Lisa, we owe my half of the vote. We appreciate your service, and we hope you do good in the future, which we know you will, because you've done a good job here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Are you crying? No, I'm okay. I'm TV, I'm just TV. Well, I had to have tried.
He likes to point that out every time I do that.
Okay, so, Kate, just questions for you, and Lisa, as we meet tomorrow. So, like Commissioner Massey's concern about filling the parts, is that's what we're going to discuss tomorrow, about when we will fill the parts, I mean, what order, as it relates to filling the director?
We can discuss it tomorrow, and obviously, you know, what we come up with is, you know, pending. My recommendation would be much as when Lisa took over, is that we wait to fill the position until, and let the new director post and interview for that once they're in place. That's going to be my recommendation. If, once we have our discussion tomorrow, you know, we come out of that with something different, you know, then we can talk about it then.
Commissioner Massey, I'll talk to you before the meeting.
It's fine with me, I'd just like Mr. Mike to get a chance, because he's been there for, what, four or five years volunteering. He has not come to me, he has not talked to me.
We can discuss that.
I just, I just know the man's been there for a while.
Yes, he's, he's a good asset for our volunteer program.
He's a graduate from Florida State University. He's got a master's degree in stuff. He's, he's a very intelligent man.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Massey, I'll talk to you before the meeting tomorrow, so I can express your concern about the meeting.
All right.
Okay. That's it for you. I meant, would you do?
Yes, thank you all very much.
Commissioner, would you?
Oh, I know. Ain't nothing more to question, all in favor? All opposed? That pass unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda will be Mr. John Solomon, TDC Administrative Report.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have a little bit of an unusually long report for me, but go ahead and get started. The collections report, the February two thousand nineteen collections were sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents. This is the eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents increase over February two thousand eighteen, which makes it a thirteen point seven percent increase in the month of February. That is the highest collection of the month of February ever for the Franklin County TDC. Website activity, we had forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five web hits to our website in the month of April of two thousand nineteen. That's compared to twenty-four thousand and fifty-two in April of two thousand eighteen, which is an eighty-four percent increase of traffic on our website for the month of April over one year. The visitor center numbers welcomed four thousand, four hundred and thirteen visitors in the month of March, three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one for the month of April. The yearly total, and this starts in January, for the two thousand nineteen is fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine visitors that have visited our center so far this year, calendar year. Concerning the county entrance sign, the county road department had contacted myself and the TDC. They found our sign going towards Saint Joe, our pieces of it. They got it to East Point Sign Design, and she can repair it for much less price than we could have to build a new one. So, the TDC board voted to have the sign rebuilt, and then the road department can get it re, put into its location that it was already in. It should be done probably by the end of this week, to be honest. I want to go update all of y'all on the Visit Florida Grant, the Open for Business campaign. At this time, the TDC and its vendors have completed most of the advertising that we have applied for. Six, in the video categories, we have six total area-specific commercials in Atlanta, The Villages, Orlando, Tallahassee, South Walton. Those are complete. The final commercial for Birmingham will begin May twenty-ninth. The eight-minute television show that I referenced in the contract with Visit Florida is now an eleven-minute television show, and it's close to completion, and now it will air a hundred and twenty-five times in the southeast, beginning on May twenty-fifth. Sinclair Media, who is the one producing the television show for us, is also using one of our Open for Business commercials as a free PSA, playing randomly on their television channels. And then, of course, we produced six commercials, four thirty-second commercials and two fifteen-second commercials, with one more commercial being produced for the Birmingham ad. Online, the TripAdvisor that the board had approved last year is, was paid for by the Visit Florida Grant, and that began on April fifteenth, and it runs till next April. The print ads, the two thousand nineteen visitor guides have been delivered, and they are in the visitor centers. Those were also paid for by the grant, which were in the original budget of the TDC. Nine magazine advertisements, as you can see, that has increased from the six that we had. We were able to be able to use the money to be able to get more advertising from what we had allotted for that. We were in Bridle Guide, Gardening Gun, Good Housekeeping, New Orleans Magazine in April, and again in May, City Scope Magazine, which is in Tennessee, Villages Daily Sun, the Florida Travel Magazine, and Sherman's Travel. Also, thirty thousand direct mailers were sent to the Villages area promoting the Forgotten Coast is open for business. And the reports I'm getting from the TDC office and the visitor center on the island, those have been responding to very well. We're getting a lot of calls and, and emails.
You want me to show one of them?
If you want, would you like to show one of the commercials? Yes, sir.
I hope I got audio. I'm sorry. I want to be out here, but here. Let me see.
Shop in our one-of-a-kind shops and boutiques, or fish with one of our experienced guides. Franklin County, Florida has something for the whole family, including your furry family members. Plan your next vacation at flortasforgottencoast.com. Franklin County, Florida, we are open for business.
And that's just one of six of them, and they're all a little different, depending on which area they were advertised in. Because we wanted to, The Villages, for example, they're more, their generation's more about history and, and relaxation, and their area dictates that, so our commercial was based more on the history of Franklin County, instead of the fun play on the beaches kind of story that we would do in Atlanta. Digital, we did eight of ten optimized blog posts on our website have been published. Social media campaigns have begun with two of the thirty-second commercials and two of the fifteen-second commercials, along with other various portions, and those have received very positive feedbacks with a lot of attention as far as likes and shares. We're doing three mini sites within the Forgotten Coast website. The first one is Florida's Forgotten Coast Weddings has been completed, as well as the Forgotten Coast Fishing Site. And this goes into the piers and different places that people can, when they get here, they can fish, and also our guide fishermen. The third site is Florida's Forgotten Coast Pet Friendly. That should be completed by the end of this week, and the digital portion to be a hundred percent completed on the grant person. The letter of support, the TDC board approved joining the county commission and sending a letter of support for the I-ten Highway sixty-five interchange. That letter has been done and sent to the, the parties. The TDC board approved at the Crew of Salty Barkers event to the small grant event promotion at the single-day event of up to two thousand dollars reimbursement. I think there was an oversight when they were doing the small grants, and they kind of got missed in the traffic, but there was some adjustments that could be made. So, we, it was, it fell into there very easily. The storage facility, the sixteen-by-twenty storage building has been installed at the TDC office. We wanted to thank Fonda and his workers for the assistance in getting the steps built, and also loading in four hundred and sixty boxes of visitor guides when they, when they arrived the next day. So, we appreciate his help with that. This is my only one action item on, that I have today. Commissioners, I'd like to request the TDC to pay for the TDC director, myself, and the TDC chairman, Commissioner Jones, to attend the Visit Florida Governors Conference. The early registration that ended on May fifteenth said over two hundred dollars to register for the conference. And it, the conference is September third through the sixth in Boca Raton. And I also would ask that, that it be reimbursed to the TDC administration, because we had to pay for it by credit card on our.
So moved. Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Burke, on the paper.
Aye.
On the poll, that pass unanimous.
And the last thing, I grabbed my, my original sheet, that I'm going to be asking the TDC board to approve us to spend two hundred and twenty-five dollars out of the promotions to enter the Visit Florida Tourism Awards in five different categories. The deadline for this is May thirty-first. It's before next TDC meeting. And I think all the, these both kind of fall together, and why I had them together is they weren't sure they were going to be a Visit Florida or Governors Conference until just a week or two ago. So, they kind of threw everything, "Okay, you got to get it done now." So, it kind of jumps in the middle, and we only found out both of these things last week. So, that's, I just wanted to let y'all know that we will be entering in the Flagler Awards for the, which is basically the Academy Award for Tourism, so, in Florida, so, with the things that they have done so far.
Good luck with it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anybody got a name from us?
I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, if the shrimp that we saw in that video came from Commissioner Parrish's business.
You'd have to talk to our.
We got to keep it homegrown.
Video grafer on that.
Okay, keep up the good work, Mr. Solomon.
Thank y'all very much, y'all have a wonderful day.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy McKenna, Library Board of Adjustments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we have our Board of Adjustment Consent Agenda. This is another one of the septic tank variances from the state, the county ordinance. It was a recommendation for approval, it was unanimous, consideration of a request for a twenty-five-foot variance from the well and septic on property located at nine forty-two Gulf Shore Boulevard, Dog Island, Franklin County, Florida. The state standard is seventy-five feet, while Franklin County has a hundred-foot requirement. Request submitted by Lucie Anne Moyer and Cynthia McFadden.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, and.
And we'll head right into our planning and zoning.
Mr. Chairman, before the board votes, I just want to get on the record, as before, with the other variances on Dog Island, that the reason that the board is granting the variance is because of erosion caused by Dog, on Dog Island by Hurricane Michael, which prevents them from keeping that one hundred-foot separation between the well and the septic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, we'll head right into our planning and zoning agenda, consent agenda. In the critical shoreline applications, we have a recommended approval. This is unanimous, contingent upon receiving the DEP and core permits. It's a consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at five Bay Cove Village, two zero three one Sand Dollar Trail, Saint George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway for the dock will be four hundred and forty-four feet by four feet with an eight-by-twenty terminus, two twelve-by-twenty boat lifts. Approval will be continued upon DEP and core permits, request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for Steve Maxwell applicant, and there is a proposed house.
Is there room for that house, honey?
There is. I have a site plan.
It just looked like a narrow lot.
Yeah, it's a narrow, they have fifteen-foot side setbacks, according to the plantation homeowners. They have a five-foot additional on the side setbacks than Franklin does.
Motion to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Massey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, number two, we have a recommended approval, unanimous, consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at lot four, Penpoint Subdivision, fourteen seventy-two Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway will be three hundred and fifty-three feet by four feet with an eight-by-twenty terminus and two twelve-by-twenty boat lifts. Applicant has their DEP and core permits, request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for John Dowdy applicant, and there's an existing house on the property.
Motion to the board.
That's so moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Massey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, number three, we have a recommendation for approval. It's also unanimous, contingent upon receiving the DEP and core permits, consideration of a request to construct an addition to an existing single-family residential dock located at lot nine, three twenty-three East Sawyer Street, Saint George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed addition will be two hundred and eighty square feet and three hundred and twelve square feet covered boat lifts to an existing dock. Customer has their DEP and core permits, request submitted by Richard DelArber applicant, and there is a proposed house.
Mr. Chairman, Amy, you have a question.
Okay.
How far out is it going to go? I mean, square footage is good, but that doesn't say anything about how wide or how, how long it is in a canal, is what I'm asking.
Okay. This is the existing, and this is a new program. The dock is, it's, you see where the yellow- The dock is, it's, you see where the yellow, it says three twenty-three Sawyer? Just into the canal, which is to the right, there's the existing dock.
You talking about the one on the bottom?
The one on the top. I don't have my clipper, I'm sorry. It's not going to exceed no farther out than the one that's on the bottom. And I'll show you the drawings.
So I'm just trying to clarify, so the figure you have as far as size, is putting back the same size, or it's an additional?
It's an additional. There's a, it's thirty-five by eight, that's the dock extension or addition. And then there's a proposed twenty-six by twelve covered boat lift.
And how wide?
Mr. Chairman.
How wide does the canal excel?
I don't have that figure about how wide the canal is. I do know that it's not going to go no farther out than this dock.
Which one?
Right here, it's not going to go any farther out, let me scroll this in. They're not allowed to exceed twenty-five percent of the canal distance. And they don't exceed, these were approved like two years ago and built. And it's not going to go any farther out than those existing ones there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass is unanimous.
Okay, number four, we have a recommendation for approval. It's unanimous, contingent upon receiving their DEP and core permits. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at lot six, fourteen fifty-two Bayfront Drive, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway is a hundred and sixty feet by four feet in width with a eight-by-twenty, eight-by-twenty terminus and two twelve-by-twenty boat lifts. Approval will be contingent upon receiving their DEP and core permits, request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for Michael Chavas, and there is a house on the property.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor? All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Okay, number five, we have a recommendation for approval. It's unanimous, contingent upon receiving their DEP and core permits. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at lot eighty-two Holiday Beach, sixty-five Fiesta Drive, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway is a hundred and forty-four feet by four feet with an eight-by-twenty terminus and two twelve-by-twenty boat lifts. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for Wayne Webb applicant, and there's a, there is a house on the property.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Masti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Okay, we're going to move down to our commercial site plan review. We have a recommendation for approval, it's unanimous. Consideration of a request to construct two boat sheds. One will be five hundred feet in length, thirty-five feet in width, it's enclosed. And a second one, a hundred and fifty feet by thirty feet, thirty-five feet open with a washdown area. Located at one forty-two Highway ninety-eight, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for John Ferguson applicant.
So, Amy, they're just asking for us to approve the site plan? Or this is like the final approval, or?
This is, once it's approved, they can start the process of construction and permitting.
So they're doing something like a, like a car wash, but maybe more for boats?
It's for a boat storage. One is an open and one is an enclosed boat storage area, and then there's a washdown area where they can pull their boats in and wash their boats down. I can show you a site plan. This property is nine point eight-one acres. They're not using the majority of the property, they're only using about half. And this is the large enclosed boat shed. And this, on the eastern side, is the smaller one that's open. And then this is the washdown area here. They do have some parking on either side and the proposed stormwater.
So Commissioner Jones, I mean, the process is you, the planties only sees the site plan and recommends approval or disapproval for a site plan. And then the actual building move is issued by the building department, so you wouldn't see anything after the site plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masti, all in favor? All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Okay, number seven, we have another commercial site plan review, recommended approval unanimously. Consideration of a request to construct a one thousand seven hundred and forty-six square foot shed located in section thirty-one Township Eight South Range Six West, also known as two sixty-eight U.S. Highway ninety-eight, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Oliver Speri, Agent for Taylor's Building Supply. What this is, it's going to be another lumber tree that's going to be situated just to the east of Franklin Street. They don't exceed their eighty percent lot coverage, and they meet all their setbacks.
This is on their property already?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish, all in favor? All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Okay, we have a lot line reconfiguration request. There was a recommendation for approval, it's unanimous, it's a consideration of a request to reconfigure lots one through six. That's lots, unfortunately, that's lots thirty, let me look here.
Thirty-one through thirty-six.
Thirty-one through thirty-six, block five sixty, lying in section four Township Nine South Range Eight West, East, and it's Apalachicola, Franklin County, Florida, request submitted by Betty Gay. This property, I couldn't get the, there was no map associated with the property appraisers, so I went to Google Earth, and this property is just west of the Bay City Work Camp off of Jewel Road, which is near the airport. This is an old platted lots, similar to the city of Apalachicola. Right now, the existing configuration, they're, all six lots are eighty-eight point eight-nine feet in width and four hundred and sixty-five, I believe, in width. What they're, what she's proposing to do is to cut these lots in half, the west half of lot thirty-six and the west half of lot thirty-five. Because the lots are narrow, there's some encroachments, and she wants to clear these encroachments up for her family, the future of her family. And, but these lots, they're the same square footage as the lots, nothing's changed. It's just that there's going to be a west half of lot thirty-six and a west half of lot thirty-five, and the east portion as well. It would still take two west-side portions and two, to make one lot, but they're the same square footage.
So, but, once we reconfigure these lots, there'll still be at least one acre?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous.
And I don't have anything else other than I would like to report that I did submit our two thousand eighteen CRS annual report. They've accepted it, and we're in good standing with the CRS program.
What does CRS stand for?
Community Rating System. We have to meet the National Flood Insurance's, you know, base regulations, and we have the higher standard, which saves the community, anybody that lives in a special flood hazard area that pays for flood insurance, they have a savings of fifteen percent based on this program. That's all I have, thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Deborah Beth, CDBG, East Point Five Big Some Houses update.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michelle.
I have for you today, I believe you have my report in your agenda pack, is correct? Okay, so there are four homes that we are ready to award the funds for the home replacement. And we have quotes from dealers. We got three quotes, we negotiated with the lower-priced vendor, which is Ironwood Homes of Perry. They didn't meet all our specs to begin with, and the owners wanted plywood flooring instead of the OSB. So we negotiated on that, and their resulting prices were higher, but still lower than the others. And so I would like to recommend the award of funds to these four homeowners. Dallas Gilbert Jr., five seventy-six Ridge Road for the initial contract and seventy thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, plus the related cost of loan recording and dock stamps, and then any additional construction costs not exceeding five hundred that could come up. I'm not expecting, but, you know, a little wiggle room there. And also, we, we, I'm trying to check into some dead tree removal, just in the area that would be a hazard to the home. And I don't know what that's going to cost, but I would like authorization to proceed, not to exceed three thousand on that. And then that would be, of course, approved by either Mark Carrington or Michael Moron before the deal.
Bold pleasure.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Mr. Masti, Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Ms. Deborah, in these homes that we're doing, these first four, are they already all hooked up to East Point Water and Sewer? Or have sewer, are they on septic tanks?
Sewer, water and sewer. The second one is. Oops.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous. Maybe I should have waited and just voted for all of them at one time.
Well, that's okay, oh, you know what? We should also declare for the record that you have no conflict of interest with the applicant and Ironwood Homes.
Okay, wait.
No conflict of interest, just for the record. DEO is real picky about that, and we need to state for the record that you have no conflict of interest.
The board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yeah. When you say conflict of interest, can you explain, I think what you're referring to is do they have any ownership interest in Ironwood Homes, the manufacturer of the home being purchased? And are they a direct and immediate family member of the person receiving the home? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, either receiving the home, or, or do you have a relative who is employed by Ironwood Homes? That's how it's interpreted sometimes by DEO.
Can you define relative? I mean, not like we go down four or five generations of Cosang Gwinneti, and they're still my relatives.
Yeah, it only goes, yeah, it only goes to, I think the state statute is parents, parents-in-law, stepparents, children, stepchildren, brothers, sisters, brothers and sisters-in-law. And I think that's as far as, it does not include aunts, uncles, cousins.
Just immediate family?
Yes.
Wife, brother, sister, stepfather?
Of course, spouse, yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Commissioner, without clarification, I think that is what she's trying to get you to answer. When she says conflict of interest, that is what she's asking you to declare. I mean, I know all the board members, and I'm pretty confident in my own mind that nobody has a conflict of interest within the meaning that she's referring to.
And we have an obligation, not only with this, but with any situation, that we have to declare conflict, or we in trouble.
Right.
So I don't know why you're saying DEO is so pushy about this, because we have a responsibility and a duty as elected official to declare any conflict.
I know, they just, they just want it in our policies that the board states that you don't have a conflict.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to amend that last motion, or we can do it all in one at the end?
I would think that you could cover all of these four applicants under one motion. So my recommendation would be just to wait until she's presented on all four, and just go ahead and go through all of those, get all the information on the table in summary fashion as quickly as you can, then the board will be in a position to make an informed decision.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Proceed, okay. The second one is Sean Boatwright, six oh one Ridge Road. The contract price of seventy thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, plus related costs of the loan recording and dock stamps, and any additional necessary construction costs not exceeding five hundred dollars. Number three, John and Paula Polis, six oh five Ridge Road, seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents, plus related costs of loan recording and dock stamps, and any additional necessary construction costs not exceeding five hundred dollars. And number four, Glenn Woodall, six oh five Wilderness Road for sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-six cents, plus related costs of loan recording and dock stamps, and also any additional necessary construction costs not exceeding five hundred dollars. And also, we have a dead tree removal issue on that lot, and I'd like to request authorization not to exceed four thousand dollars for tree removal on his property.
How many trees on, how many dead trees? Is it more than one?
Oh, yes. And, and in the case of Mr. Woodall, you know, out in Ridge and Wilderness Road, the lots are deep, but not that wide. And the trees that are remaining on his property, the dead trees from the fire, are on the side of the lot. So there's not a whole lot of, you know, you can't run and can't hide because the lot's too narrow. Had they been in the back, it would be different. But on the side, and Dallas Gilbert has a few around his, too, that are dead from the fire.
Is that going to be enough money to do it? Especially if one of them, it could be a live tree and it fall on the house, I mean.
Well, that's why we want to get it done before the mobile home is delivered.
So it's going to be enough clearance there for, you know, not to fall on the house, dead or alive?
Well, we need to hire somebody who knows how to handle that, so push him the right way.
Well, we need to, maybe you do, because it's a one-shot, and we don't want to come back to the county and say, hey, y'all put it there in the tree though. You know, after, it's up to the board though. Okay, go ahead. That's all for them?
Yes, sir.
And one more thing, is all these houses the same?
Done, sir. Dallas Gilbert and Sean Boatwright are the same, three-bedroom, two baths. John and Paula Polis, it's three-bedroom, two baths, but it's a double-wide. They had a double-wide before, and they really were insisting on that, and so we did that proposal. And Glenn Woodall is a two-bedroom, two-bath, and he's happy with that size.
I seen one on six oh nine this morning.
That is not one, that must be one of the donation.
The one that she just moved in?
The six, so, six fifteen, six fifteen Carol Dacens. That's the one that she put in a lot of money into, and the county paid the difference on after her insurance.
Deborah, is this, are these loans that are going to these people, or is this free and clear?
It is a, it's called a deferred payment loan, it's actually a conditional grant. The period is ten years, and ten percent is forgiven at the end of each of the ten years, so that at the end, it's free and clear. The, there are no payments, no interest. However, if there is a default, the amount that has not been forgiven is due and payable. And a default would be basically if they're no longer the owner and the occupant, as their primary residence. And I did put in there about, if they haven't paid their taxes or their other debts against the property, that would be a default, just to protect the county's position a little better.
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was speaking of them trees, to get them removed, because they got default. Tree fall on the house, will we be in the fault, Mr. Stewart? Alive or dead?
No, sir, we're not the property owner, we are administering a grant that is providing housing to replace housing destroyed by the wildfire. We are not the guarantor of that property.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, pleasure to the board.
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by two, Commissioner Bowden, Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Tell them good luck with it and do that.
Thank you, sir. We have the, I had the mortgages all drawn up and people scheduled to come in right after lunch today to sign.
When, how long you think this whole process gonna be before all of them, before most of them will be back in their home?
Well, this first four, they should be in, the dealer's estimate is a couple of months. No, less than three for these four. We have several applicants who don't, either don't own land because they owned a mobile home but not the land it was on or they had some informal agreement to purchase. Or we have the divorce situations where they and their ex-spouse own the property and the divorce did not divide the property and the spouse hasn't done a deed. It's a mess in some situations. We have several of those. And so how long it takes them to get their situation resolved will affect that, of course. I'm hoping to do another batch of homes soon and then start doing some rehabs if, you know, if there are homes that are feasible.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking when they, you know, when people see the first batch going there, they gonna, we gonna start getting them called?
Mm-hmm. I hope so because people...
When they all gonna be?
Yeah.
Get rid of it.
Laurie waiting newspaper man up and tell me.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something, please? Ms. Deborah, we do have a unique scenario that we really need to pay attention to. We, as the county, we had some donated funds, which is not under your purview,
Right.
that were to help residents. And there's already been some moving with that. And they've been using funds to get residents homes, some that can't apply for this grant. And I know that our really only thing as a county is we applied for the grant. That's our role in this whole thing. But I know that and feel confident that the group that has the donated funds need to find a way to disperse them. But they're kinda being held up with the timeline of your grant, the CDBG. Because what we don't need to do as a county, and I'm speaking for myself, not the board, this is how I feel about it, what we don't need to do as a county is think that X, Y, Z that still haven't been helped are gonna be helped under CDBG and somehow disperse all these funds that we've been holding on to and then somebody can't qualify and now there's no way to help them. That's not what we started out to do. So my understanding issue is what kind of timeline are we really looking at? And I preface it with this, when I was a junior in high school, our house burned. And it's been, it's not your fault, it's not anybody else's fault, but it's been almost a year. So what kind of timeline are we really looking at? Are we looking at possibly doing this once a month till they're completed? Or is it gonna be six months in between before we hear about another four? And I'm not trying to be indifferent.
I understand, I understand.
Find an answer.
Yeah, I think we got the money in, I don't know, something like November. But we, I'm going to just go ahead and send letters to the people that I don't have applications for and say, you know, here's the qual, here's the income limit and you have to have title to your property. And I'll go from the property appraisers' records to do that, unless I know of an update or something. But, I mean, I guess at some point we just have to do a cutoff and say, you know, time's up. We've had some people who have turned it down outright. Last, during the last, like last week, somebody I've been dealing with says, "I've decided, nope, I don't know if I'm gonna live here, I'm single, I'm, you know, unencumbered. I think I might move away." And so I don't have a whole lot of active applicants with title to their property at this stage.
I know that we, there's only so much we can ask or do. I do understand that. But I just, if you're saying that everybody that's really wanting the grant has applied for it and are actively pursuing it, at some point, could we as commission, as commission, get a list of those that said, "Nope, we're not doing it"? Those that are still out there so we will know, you know what I mean? Because again, I know that our only thing was applying for the grant.
Right.
That was our role, to apply for it. But you know, I'm just trying to get some clarification. So you know, if somebody does choose to try to pin one of us down and say, you know, you guys did this or the other one, no, from what I understand, you turned it down, you don't want it. I mean, because at the end of the day, all we can do is apply.
And I have done like, well, there was one, I did a letter to say you changed, you know, you have withdrawn, this is to confirm our conversations. And then later, I get a call that maybe she wants back in. But then, nothing has happened to resolve the issue. So, yeah, I will be able to give you a list of who has been assisted, who has applied and what their situation is. Like, you know, doesn't have title or, or yes, we're working on it or whatever.
In fairness to you and the group you're with, Ramona's planning, this don't need to drag on for two years with you being back and forth, I won't help, I don't want help. So at some point, yes, we do need a clear path forward, I guess is what I'm asking for.
If I may.
Makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, what it sounds like it needs, we need to have is a meeting between yourself, Tim Center, me, you know, kinda coordinated, get a combined list of who's what, who doesn't want what. Because don't forget, I still have that, because I have a meeting this week with somebody who got one of the units from the sheriff and they wanna voice their disapproval of what I talked about with the board last week. So I guess it sounds like we need to have a combined meeting here with everyone. Have one list that assigns who is helping who and who's turning it down and then that we present to you guys, you know, you have it for your records. And as we move forward, we update that list continually.
I would have been prepared for that for sure. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Ms. Deborah, I just wanted to know the mechanics of this. Our commission has applied for these grants. We have the grants. Is our financial deputy clerk taking that grant money and then mailing checks to the mortgage company every month?
No, there is no mortgage company. Okay, what happens is, the mechanics of the program, as you said, the, I'm under contract, so I issue invoices to county staff. They approve it and it goes through payment. There are payments to clerk's office for doc stamps and recording fees. But basically, the rest of it is money that goes to mobile home dealers. Like these four that were just approved, there are four checks, I believe, that have been requested to do the forty percent down payment for each of those. When it's delivered, we'll do another payment for another forty percent to the vendor. And then at certificate of occupancy and completion of the initial punch list, we'll do the final twenty percent. So there's typically three checks go out to a mobile home dealer now. And if we are doing rehab, of course, we have payments to the contractor. But there is no debt, the county received the money. The county disperses it to vendors on behalf of the homeowners. So there is no continuing payment. We're done. When we're finished, and we've paid the bills for the purchases or the repairs or whatever, that is it.
Then the homeowner, the resident, the occupant of that unit, you mentioned ten-year payment. What is that?
Okay, there is no payment. The term of the agreement with the county is ten years. And that's just to prohibit, prevent profiteering and that type of thing. Ten years is an arbitrary length of time. It is not set by statute or anything. The county's policy was up to twenty-five thousand dollars in assistance. The agreement would be five years. Twenty, twenty-five thousand and forty thousand, the agreement would be seven years. And above forty thousand dollars, it would be ten years. And so the owners are not making any payments to the county. They're just owner occupants.
That's the direction of time.
And it gets forgiven at the end. Now, if...
Actually, they need to hang in there.
Right. Now, there is, there was one where the owner died and in order to clear the title, the family, I believe, is going to be paying off the unexpired portion of her loan. That's called program income. The ship program, when that happens, you roll it into your ship program fund. But when it happens with CDBG, you have to pay it back to the state.
Commissioner, if I may, Deborah. Commissioner, remember when you talked to Ms. Laurie Switzer a while back and she explained to you the ship program? Basically, they stay in the house for so many years. Each year, we forgive a portion of the loan. And after those years, the loan is totally forgiven. Same concept, just with a little bit more rules, that's all. So I just wanna draw reference for you so that you know, CDBG ship is about the same, with a little bit more rules.
Ms. Beth, y'all got one company billing them?
These four are all going to Ironwood Homes. We did get proposals from three companies. In addition to Ironwood, it was Clayton Homes and Lolly Homes.
Did y'all ask all of them for a book?
We asked, we, I gave them a set of specifications. And then also, I asked like the ones who we were serious about, you know, being competitive, asked them for their spec sheets, their manufacturer spec sheets, and we compared.
No, what I was, I guess you misunderstood my asking you. Say you had ten trailers, did you ask them for a book price for the ten?
Oh, well, we asked for proposals for all four homes. However, the county is not doing the purchase directly. The owners are purchasing and the county is financing. So although they were done at one time, unless the county guarantees that you're going to purchase and then sell them to the owners, that doesn't work. But we did, we did get, I think, some, some pretty good pricing compared to what I, what we got the last part of the grant and what I've gotten in Jackson County recently.
Okay. Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, just a comment on the prior conversation with Commissioner Jones wanting to move this program to completion as soon as possible and individuals that they want in, they want out, they want it. One thing that works well in most every program is a deadline. And the board may want to consider having Ms. Belcher receive a deadline for applicants for these grant funds and then she can communicate that in writing to people so that there will be a finite point, an established date in time that if you haven't applied by this date, then you're out. Something for the board to consider.
And also, it's a situation where sometimes people have applied, but it's their ownership situation that they have to resolve. And it would be the same end result, though, a deadline that says if you don't have it resolved by this date, we have to move on.
Okay. So we've given these four units to these four families and they have no monthly payment. But their responsibility is that they stay in it for the duration that we intended them to. They do pay the property taxes ultimately and they have the responsibility to maintain that property. After, and then after that timeframe expires, what happens next in the succeeding families? Do we own the property again?
No, no, we don't, we don't take ownership at all. It is as if we were the bank and had a mortgage and it's satisfied.
We help them to get a hold again.
Right.
Okay. And then do we have any monitoring process to make sure that they're complying with our standards?
Well, there's the informal one that we've had where we've talked about foreclosing on one that the owners didn't continue living in. There is the issue of if there's going to be a title transfer, it will come up because there's a mortgage on the property, which is, as I was speaking about just a minute ago, where the owner died and the family, I'm assuming they want to sell the property, I don't know. But we, you know, I did a calculation of here's how much is remaining on the loan so they can take care of that, pay the county. So we don't, up until this point, the county, we only did ten houses in the first phase of this grant. And to my knowledge, eight of those are still the owner occupants. One being the one, one of the two who is not is the one who died recently. And then the others are the ones that we've discussed having mortgage foreclosure on for abandoning.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Ms. Deborah once she's here. Ms. Deborah, I'm sorry to give you so many questions, but
That's okay.
we don't see each other very often. I heard you mention a couple of times in talking to you this morning about rehab of trailers. Please catch me up to speed to that because as I understand, when we applied for this grant, we applied to replace trailers. So can you shed some light on what you're saying?
If a home has been damaged by the fire and it's still feasible for rehab, we can do that. In fact, we need to do a few because we have to keep our cost average.
You mean the outside of the complete losses, the resident suffer?
Right, right. Yes, there could, there are some that I believe had like, you know, damaged siding and things like that.
That's the one we had, the melted siding, two of them, and that was always wrong with them, so.
And one that was damaged, Richard Williams, he had applied in the last cycle and didn't get selected because he wasn't as high up on the priority list. But he's one who's decided he's not going to participate. And I think he probably would have ended up with the new home because from what I remember about it before, plus damages, I think in terms of economically viable, it would have been better to replace, but...
I just want to clarify when you're here.
Yeah, we are to assist whether it's rehab or replacement. But now, the rehab, it would not be just the damage from the fire. You touch it, you touch a home with CDBG dollars, you fix everything.
Well, who, did y'all got a licensed person checking for the, make sure the rehab is done right?
Well, I've done that in the past. And then, of course, the building inspector inspects, you know, what is permitted.
I mean, he do that inspection before and after, right?
Well, I do the work right up. But then if I have any questions about, you know, if I think something is, you know, not sure about, then I ask. But so far, it's worked well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Ms. Deborah, just to completely clarify, when we're talking about rehab, everything we're just mentioning, we are talking about rehabbing homes in the fire area.
Correct.
Because as I remember, when we applied for the grant, we were told that it could only be used for that area.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the, I take five.